Okay, call the Economic Development Committee meeting back to open session. With regards to the item on our agenda discussion and possible action in terms of a development agreement with T-Wall Enterprises Development LLC for city-owned land in the Riverview North Zone Lot 6, 7, and 8. The committee has met in closed session and after discussion, has reached general agreement on where we are with the agreement at this point. We're asking staff to go back now and finalize a definitive terms, a term sheet, and draft agreement for us to consider at the next council meeting on the 15th. And hopefully to have documents related to that available for public consumption the previous week before that council meeting. So there's no further action that we need to take in this open session on it. Number nine, discussion and possible action on the community for all resolution. Madam Mayor, thank you for bringing this to our committee.
Sure. I don't know what you want from me. I feel like this has been pretty well covered internationally, but I do want to thank County Board Supervisor Will Harris for being here tonight. I believe that the copy you have in front of you is a lot of his work, so thank you for that. So basically what we're talking about today is the county board has been kind of working through this community for all resolution ever since last June after that George Floyd march that we had nearly 2,000 people show up. It was historic. And I guess my intention last week with my proclamation was to support the work that they've done, was to support our community and to make sure that people felt that they belonged here no matter what. And I wanted to definitely support the hard work and the years' work that our fellow supervisors, especially in the city here, have been working on. So I guess, you know, I heard from a couple of you that you wanted the opportunity to talk about this. And then I heard from a couple of you that maybe you didn't want the opportunity to talk about this. So I think maybe the opportunity is now for you to decide what you want to do. In my opinion, this is not a hard or controversial discussion. I think that the copy and the information you have in front of you is pretty standard. And it would probably say a lot if we had a unanimous vote in favor of this. And, you know, I guess maybe what you could use from me is the reaction that I've gotten from the community since that proclamation overwhelmingly positive. I actually had somebody yesterday at the Reston Memorial Day commemoration come up to me. And he was teary-eyed, you know, he's an early guy. And he's like, you know, just thank you. And I don't know, I didn't ask if it was him or his family members that he felt affected by this, but he was very thankful. And then I also did that same thing. I talked to someone who said, I just, I don't understand why this is a big deal. I don't even know why you have to talk about it. It seems like this is who we are, like, we do care about this. So, you know, you'll hear, you'll hear, once you vote on this or you don't, you'll hear from a loud group of people. And I think that who we are is we support each other no matter what. And that's what I have to say. So if you have any questions, let me know. Otherwise, I feel like maybe the supervisor has some commentary too. I don't actually know why you're here, but I think it's because of this.
Well, Mr. Harris, you're welcome to come up and give us a prelim, and then we'll jump right in.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you to the Economic Development Committee. Thank you Mayor Rosenberg for your leadership. If that was important to me just to speak a little bit on this, I want to express my support for the City of Wausau supporting a community for all resolution. I think it is important that we do affirm our values publicly, that we state we are a welcoming community for all and to all. We should be able to acknowledge diversity within our community, celebrate our differences, and meet our challenges together as a community. In doing so, we ensure that we remain a vibrant, inclusive, and growing city that will continue to prosper and has a bright future. We want everyone in this community to feel that they belong. We want everyone to have access to the same opportunities. We want everyone to contribute. From a people's standpoint, it just makes sense because our people are our greatest asset. From an economic development standpoint, being more inclusive lets businesses know that they can invest here because we welcome their talented and diverse workforces and that we are an open and welcoming place to live and work. I think from a, from residents' perspective, diverse backgrounds, we want people to know that they're appreciated and appreciated too, and we want them to invest in our community. Now, some of what we have seen in terms of investment, for instance, if you look at, you know, businesses, Ginseng, we are our nation's biggest grower, and that's because of our diverse communities. I'm on the Mung American Center, Board Directors, brought in right before the pandemic, 2.9 million in tourism. So when you think about sort of economic growth and development, think about all of the other potential economic development opportunities that could await us if we invest in our people, in all of our people, and can embrace each other, encourage each other, and support each other. Because we must remember that if we are to move forward at all, we must do so together, united. A community for all can't just be a slogan. It must be who we are and who we want to continue to be as a community in every facet, if we see for ourselves a successful, thriving, prosperous future for everyone. So I ask that you all vote for this. I would love it if you voted unanimously to show a sign of unity, and I thank you for your time tonight.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Harris. Well, you know, in speaking with the mayor earlier on, I not only welcomed, you know, bringing this to the ED Committee, I felt it was necessary. This is not just appropriate to be here, it's important to be here. And there's various levels that, you know, we can take into consideration when we're looking at this. You know, Mr. Harris, you bring up so many, the arguments I would just be sitting here making myself. From an ED standpoint, it just makes complete total sense. But from a human standpoint, it makes total sense. And you wish you did not have to do this, but I think that we really do have to. And not only that, but in the, in light of the wonderful publicity that we've received, I'm sure with, you know, the Dateline parentheses, "Wausau, Wisconsin" is the first thing anybody reads after the headline, we got, as a city, got a lot of pushback and flak from all over about the city, not about Marathon County, not about the Marathon County Executive Committee Board. It's just, it came on us because we're the, we're the county seat and we're the big dog. And that, that just hurts. It hurts emotionally, it can hurt our bottom line as well, you know? And it really, I think, merits us to step up unanimously and say, no. That, that flack is undeserved and unfair and is directed at, you know, a city that doesn't really, you know, correspond to what's being said about it. And I really think that that means as a governing body, as representatives of our residents here, that we, you know, arm in arms to say, no, we are all together for this and no reservations whatsoever. So anything else from the committee on this? Alder Rasmussen?
Thank you. You know, this, this is something that I struggle a little bit with. I feel like as a council, we were a little bit blindsided by this because, you know, we were essentially sucked into Marathon County's drama. And Lord knows, each unit of government is certainly entitled to and, and endures its own level of drama. And so often, when that shoe is on the other foot, they're like, whoo, that's Wausau's drama, we're not going to interfere in that. And, you know, we're often content to leave one another as units of government to ride those storms out ourselves or themselves. And so all at once, you know, we flip on the five o'clock news and there we are, and it's now come to our doorstep. And, you know, in the last year, I would say that we have struggled with a lot of, as a council, we've struggled with the juxtaposition of a lot of social issues. And sometimes those issues are larger than local governments. And, you know, we know that countries across America are struggling with the same type of thing. And when that happens, when something is a state struggle or a national struggle, individual units of government probably cannot solve that. And, you know, where I struggle with this a little bit is Marathon County grappled with this for a year and they could not find common ground. Now, why, we don't know, because we haven't sat down and talked with those folks who worked on it in depth, that really were working from the other side to try to find that middle. But I think it's important for us to recognize that we have shared constituency. Eleven members of that board represent the same exact people that the eleven of us, we're not, not any, none of us are duly appointed anymore. We used to have members in common, but you represent the same group of people. And so when they fight with an issue like this for a year and they can't find common ground, chances are that shared constituency is as divided as it's ever been. And so no matter what decision you make, half of your districts, half of your, you know, supervisory area or whatever, is going to be pretty angry with whatever decision you made. And, you know, we, we as a council and as a committee had no hand in creating the document that's been put in front of us. And so I feel like in many, in many facets of this, we kind of have been left with a false choice because we're to the point now where, and I understand that the mayor felt that she needed to issue the proclamation she needed as this was unfolding because it was some fast-moving, big drama. But that kind of leaves us with, it leaves us in an odd position because what are you accused of if you don't vote for it? And if you do vote for it, what does the other side accuse you of? And, you know, at the end of the day, we're elected to nonpartisan office. So we are supposed to find that middle and, and figure out what the majority of each of our districts wants to see happen. We've not really interacted with our people at all on this item, but it's here and it's ready for action. And, you know, it contains a lot of the language that was a source of argument at County Board. It still contains the word equity and not equality. And we haven't, you know, there's a lot of people that will read that and decide that that is a financial term that is creating an outcome. And, you know, whether we agree or disagree with those people, they live here. And, you know, and I wonder, you know, on other issues, we have also passed resolutions. And a resolution, we have to all know on the front end, does absolutely nothing to modify people's behaviors. I mean, that was the same argument we had about masks. It was the same argument we had about conversion therapy and a lot of these other things that we've taken up. A resolution is us saying, we aspire to this, or we want people to do this or not do that. But at the end of the day, it, it does absolutely nothing to change individual people's either behaviors or beliefs. But it does a whole lot to stir up inflammations that already exist in our community. So if we're trying to like dial down the temperature of our community politically and find a way for people to coexist together and just bring the whole temperature down, which hasn't really come down since the 2020 election, stuff like this is probably not, at this particular time, is probably not the way to like calm everybody down. You know, and I do struggle with the fact that the New York Times article is referenced in the resolution. Because we have always been proud of the fact that we don't make new policy in reaction to negative media. So at the very least, we should not be referencing and giving mileage to a negative article that then caused us to take stock of, you know, who we are and what we want to be. In my mind, Wausau has always been this, a good place to live. We, you know, when you rewind a couple of years ago, Mayor Milkie created the Mayor's Welcoming and Diversity Committee that Tom was the first chairman of, which has now become Liberation and Freedom. And the original onus behind that was looking at things from a, you know, 3,000-foot level and saying, how can Wausau be more welcoming to everybody regardless of who they are or where they came from, including businesses and their workforces? So it was an overarching lofty goal, you know, we weren't taking up individual issues, but it was trying to figure out kind of a think tank. How can Wausau make people feel welcome and not let people feel like they've moved, moved to some small, closed-minded community where if you're not from there, you're not welcome? And that was the mindset because, you know, we see in a lot of smaller communities, that happens. If you're not from there, you're like an outsider and people feel like they just aren't a part of anything. We never wanted that for anybody. And so I feel like we've been trying to make strides on some of this stuff for years, and I feel like we have made strides on a lot of it. But yet, we're here with this like ready-made document, which I feel like we need to really like talk about. Not to say that we don't want to aspire to the goals that are in here, because I think that goes without saying. I think we've been trying to do that for a long time. So, you know, in its current form, though, I just don't feel that it's going to change how people behave. And I feel like in the short term, because we have this divisiveness, it really in some cases has cast a bright light on people that maybe didn't want all that attention. And, you know, I say that only because, you know, I happen to be friends with a minority member of our community who just mentioned to me that having grown up, having grown up in our community, never had trouble with anything or anybody. And now, just recently, is getting the side-eye from people in the grocery store. And so have we really created a situation where we are not helping the people we think we're helping? And that, I guess, concerns me. You know, I don't want members of our community feeling like they're getting the side-eye in the supermarket.
I don't believe that this, this sort of document, proclamation, resolution is altogether without precedent in other communities around the country, around the state. We're not breaking new ground here. I think it's very important to keep in mind that, you know, sure, we're not going to suddenly by having this resolution come to council and get passed, now people in our area who don't have a good outlook on their neighbors are suddenly going to have a good outlook on their neighbors. I know that that's not something that you can achieve by issuing a proclamation or a resolution. But what we do have, and I think this is a responsibility we have to take strongly because we represent the city. We represent the city's image and brand. And I just, you know, it makes me just shiver with anger to think that somebody now is going to be less apt to want to move here or open a business here, raise a family here because they've heard about what here is like. And they envision some, some kind of, you know, northern redneck, you know, community that, you know, is insular and horrible. And anything we can do as a ruling body representing our constituency, representing our brand, not just internally, but in the state and in the nation, if we want to be, you know, the greatest, you know, the best small city in America, is to show that we will stand up for things that are just inherently, intrinsically correct and right to do. And not worry about somebody, they don't like the word equity in a document. I mean, I'm sorry, I can go to a dictionary and read what equity means and I'll get five different, you know, meanings. It's not the point. Anybody who has some sort of a gut rejection of this whole idea, I mean, if it's not the word equity, it's going to be something else that they want to shoot this, you know, down or push it back. And we've just got to rise above that kind of pettiness. We've got to rise above it and stand up, you know, bigger and taller than that smallness that's out there. And it takes some courage and it takes the willingness to get a beating from some of your constituents in emails or phones or whatever. I don't care. I don't care. I'll walk out of this door right now, tonight, and I don't care what anybody says to me about what were you doing, what were you thinking? I'm like, forget about it. I did, I did it because I believe in it. I think it's true. I think it's needed. I think it's, it's important on a lot of levels. We can't just look at this selectively and say, well, it's, you know, I don't like the word equity, and that's all, and we start the whole concept. It's really important, I think. And I'm up here kind of shaking, you know, out of how important I think it is. Alder Watson?
I also agree that this is something important to, to vote for. It does change, I mean, it does shape our image. It shows us what we, what our community represents. And I think a lot of this has been discussed at the Liberation and Freedom Committee too. So you could argue that it's not just totally coming, you know, straight from a county perspective, right?
Yeah, I do want to mention that this, the recommendation to support this resolution did come from the Liberation and Freedom Committee, and we kind of sat on it. We haven't met in a little bit, so this isn't out of nowhere. It's just a little bit more, a little louder right now.
And I think, I guess my other point to sort of agree with Alder Rasmussen, I would prefer to take out the fourth whereas about the New York Times chunk, oh wait, yeah, it's on the first page. Take that New York Times chunk out because I think this community for all had been a discussion that started a long time ago. It, you know, was prompted by other, you know, other events. It's not just that New York Times thing. We're not just trying to CYA or, you know, do something like that.
I could take that under advisement, sounds fine to me. Alder McLehany?
Yeah, I, I totally agree. That was my first comment is that I would like the fourth whereas taken out completely, it looks like it's a knee-jerk from the New York Times. This shouldn't, if we're going to vote for this, this shouldn't be a knee-jerk reaction. This should be something coming from the heart, right? And it's not, you know, it's not something, I mean, that's just what, it just kind of hit me wrong when I first read it. It was like, oh, look, we have this bad press, so now we have to come out. I'm sure it was done, you know, in a way that, you know, was, was a positive. But I think in going forward, when we're now slowing things down and talking about it, let's talk about the community and not what somebody else has said and that we're trying to refute those points.
Okay. Well, well taken. Anything else? Alder Hillier?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I would note that I serve on the Liberation and Freedom Committee, and this comes from the committee with the highest level of support. And I guess, you know, I was born and raised here, probably conceived here, and hopefully and probably I'll expire here someday. So I would say a son of the city since 1978. It's in my blood and I love this city. And I think that, as Alder Rasmussen said, this is a community full of great people. However, historically and currently, and we can see this in policy and past policy, it was said, we don't respond to negative press. Maybe we should. Because if we had done that, you know, 15 years ago in my district, in my neighborhood, and I will make the relevance clear on this, you know, I think what we've seen is that in certain areas of town, diverse working-class areas, it has not been a community for all. And that doesn't mean there haven't been people on this body who, who have fought for such an ideal and outcome. But, you know, mathematically and statistically, that, that goes beyond a matter of opinion. It is simply a matter of fact. And we've started to talk about these things in our policy discussions. And that's why I think it's not only important that we affirm this through language, but that we affirm it through action. And every time we take an action and we make a decision on policy, we have a real opportunity to affirm that this is a community for all, whether it's race, ethnicity, or socioeconomics. And really, that will not take place fully until we can affirm it through policy action. So I thank Supervisor Harris for his work on this and others in the county board and those from the community. And I agree with you, Mr. Chair. I mean, sometimes, and it's healthy in a democracy to, to have a debate and sometimes differing opinions, but at the end of the day, leaders lead from the front and we must do what is right and what is just. And so today, I would say, this is a good start for us to, to pass this. And then we should reaffirm it through policy action. And I'd like to see this stapled to every ED proposal in our packet as well as any environmental issue so that we remember that the people are to be protected and to be included. And I think we can act as an example. And so I, I support this strongly today. And when I've talked about this, you know, there's, when you have policy discussions in town, one thing that I've learned is, is how have these things been explained? How have they been discussed in the community, whether it's through press and on the ground? And just overwhelmingly, left, right, and center, left, right, and center, this is supported. So let's do this tonight and then let's walk the walk and do it through action. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Hillier. Alder Rasmussen?
Thank you. I just don't want us to overemphasize the value of negative press. I mean, you'll recall, and I think this was also the New York Times a few years ago where somebody was sitting around on a slow news day and said, whoa, fun fact, Wausau has a snowball ordinance. And oh my God, that you, who'd have thought? You know, and the things that we were called then, you know? And so, and we then, at that point, undertook an effort to change that ordinance because that just made us look petty and awful. And against legal advice, to leave it, leave it alone. And at the end of the day, I think people are, you know, that reading, first, it had me scratching my head in the first place that people who read that publication on a daily basis have any interest what happens in central Wisconsin, let alone the rest of flyover America, which is what they refer to it as. And so then as this, you know, shows up and creates an image in people's minds, for how long? And to what degree? You know, and I just, I guess I don't see that news story as having long-term economic negative impact to our community. It's one day. It's the events of one particular news day. And if there had been any other, you know, late-breaking piece of news on a national scale, Wausau wouldn't have even come up on their radar. So, you know, I hope that we're not overvaluing that. The New York Times reference absolutely has to go if that's going to be passed. And I think that recognizing, and I, and I think, you know, if we're going to look at, you know, who approves of this, left, right, and center, I promise you, it's certainly not the right. So, you know, that said, there's a lot of, there is a lot of negative dialogue happening in the community. So for every person that says, this is awesome, thank you for doing it, there is another whole group that says, whoa, city, this is not your sphere. You know, they believe that the job of local government is to oversee the budget and provide services that people need, want, and expect at an affordable price. And beyond that, I think then we get accused into, you know, going and sticking our feet into management waters that, you know, perhaps belong at the state and national level and that there's not a place for us as tiny little local government. And that's, that's going to be a tough one.
Well, Alder, you know, I typically agree with you on just about every bloody thing that comes through here. I'm in great disagreement with you on this. And I don't want to deliver it too much, but even had that New York Times article never appeared, I would have pushed for this act based on the actions of the executive committee of the county board. That would have been enough. Having heard and read comments coming out of that and related to that would have spurred me to do what we're doing right here tonight. I don't care about, you know, without the New York Times article, I'd still be here talking.
Well, and my point is, not to even argue the point, but to say on a personal level, whether or not, I mean, we hold nonpartisan office. So at the end of the day, we are elected to make a decision that reflects the majority of the residents in our district that sent us here to do a job. Are we confident that the vast majority of our residents in every district want to see this happen?
No.
Because we've not had any dialogue with those people. Neighborhood groups aren't meeting. I mean, we assume that people want, you know, and on a personal level, I agree with a lot of the stuff that's written in here. But if I'm trying to make a decision that balances an equal portion of public sentiment, I'm not sure I can do that today.
I don't think we can have, I don't think we can have a public referendum on the relative matters of equality. Alder Watson?
But I do think we saw a lot of the support for this at the last council meeting, right? When we talked about pushing it back to ED. And, I mean, voting on this and sending it to council, that's going to allow more people to become aware of it and voice their opinion. So, I mean, this was ultimately, you know, recognizing that this, this article and just that, you know, this statement itself is powerful and attracting business. I mean, Google is there. You can type in, like, if a business was going to come relocate here, they can type in Wausau, Wisconsin, news, and I'm sure this will come up. And then so will the New York Times article. But if we see, if they see this, they might be a little more open to investigating. So, can we, are we going to move on this today or?
I want to move on this day. I was thinking maybe that I would get a motion either from Watson or McLehany based on your concerns about item, the whereas for, is it? If you wanted to amend the, the resolution to remove that reference and then vote on that. I just want to, you know, before we get to that motion, I just wanted to say that I, I don't think it's, it's absolutely fair to point out that perhaps some people are going to say, hey, you know, say, hey, you know, stay in your lane, do what you're supposed to do, take care of our streets, blah, blah, blah. There are people like that. And I, like I said, send them to my door, I'll talk to them if you want. It's not, it's not a viewpoint that I think is based in honor and fairness. What we're asking about right here is something fundamentally human, and something to stand up for as a community and show it. Sure, we do things behind the scenes. We have, you know, a committee that does this, and we have, you know, policies we're looking into to do that, and we have aspirations and goals. What we don't have is sort of like, you know, we have a motto for the city. But what we don't have is a clear statement on this issue, which has raised its head over the past year or more, more than it hasn't in a long time. Of course, it's been around a long time. And to Mr. Killian's point, sometimes leaders just got to lead. And you got to see what's in front of you and do the correct and right thing. And damn, the torpedoes. I don't really care about some Jasper being unhappy with me about it, because that Jasper is not seeing the picture, and has a problem that I don't even understand. And that's not how I want our government to, you know, govern, is for the Jaspers like that, that they have no basis to their point. Madam Mayor.
I don't know what a Jasper is, but you don't have to explain. It might be old timey. I'm going to look it up in your.
What?
I'm going to look it up. But I do want to say that there are some big businesses around here, and leaders of those businesses have called me, and they've said, thank you. Thank you for taking this stance. It's really important for us. And I'm like, awesome, I hope they make a big statement. And, you know, when the media's like, oh, who can we talk to about this? I'm like, oh, you should go talk to X, Y, Z. They're like, oh, we're not going to make a statement on this. So I think there's an opportunity for us to encourage our businesses to stand with us and take a stance on this and not be scared, because they're here with us, and it's important. So I think that's one thing. And I think the other thing is, if you want action items, one of the things I'm very excited about is our strategic planning. And I think if you wanted an action item in this resolution, it's to make Wausau a community through all, for all, through our strategic planning, that should be one of the main pillars of what we're doing here. We, questions that we ask the community, and how they interact with us and services, because I think you'll find there are a couple of different things. And just by having this conversation, I've had such great things, like, why don't we have certain, certain things available to people? And, believe me, I'll be bringing them to your committees as we continue on this process. But I think we'll find that it's important to continue the discussion beyond this and to our, you know, five to seven-year strategic plan.
Thank you, Mayor. Alder McLeheny.
Thank you. I just, I hear people talking, and I've listened to county board, and I really, really, really would ask everyone to bring up people with disabilities as strongly as all the other marginalized populations. I work with people every day. I have a son. And this community is not a great community for those people. And so, I, you know, when people just throw out marginalized populations, they are always at the end. And so I just ask that everybody hold them up, you know, as an equal to the other marginalized populations. It's important that they also have a voice. Thank you.
Thank you. Well taken. Yes, sir. Mr. Guzman, please make yourself at home.
Gary Guzman, 319 Park Avenue, Wausau. I was not, I was prepared to speak to the T-Wall issue this evening, so I didn't come. But after viewing a lot of town meetings, a lot of meetings within the past month with regard to the county board or whatever, I think that a lot of people are looking to the city council, because you are the leaders of this community. You set the standards. No young Asian girl needs to be spoken down to at a playground. No transgender person in this community needs to be spoken down to at any place in this community. No gay couple needs to be spoken down to walking to the streets of the city. This just should not happen in this community. No aged person should be discriminated against. And Becky brings up the handicap folk. There just shouldn't, there should be no room for people being talked down to, and I just don't understand it. And I think that we have to, the city council, leaders in this community, and even leaders outside of this city council, have, and they're, and they're the ones, the other leaders of this community, that also has to take a step and realize that people are not being treated very well in this community. The New York Times article spoke very correctly. The article was right. It was, and Wausau got with the byline, but I think the story on the county is, and that executive committee was right on, and it brought an alertness to this community. If you weren't at other town, town meetings prior to that, you were hearing these issues. And I think that all the groups that I mentioned before are looking to the city. They want to stay in this city. They, they don't want to, they don't need a reason to leave this community. We want them to stay in this community. And I think this resolution is one, was one step in providing that. Let's not hinder this city, I mean, this city has a long history of some not-so-good history, but other times, a lot of good history. And I think that this resolution moves us a lot further towards that. And I would hope that this committee would speak to that issue and forward it to the city council. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alder Watson?
So I guess I would make the motion to approve this resolution, or to amend the resolution, removing the fourth whereas?
Sure.
And then, do I go on to, like, move to approve it?
I'm sorry?
Do I go on to move to approve it after the fourth whereas is removed?
I'm sorry, I just don't.
Oh, like, so I, do I do the amend the resolution first, and then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. We'll vote on the amendment. Is that a second? Okay, there's a second. All right. Any further discussion on the proposed amendment?
So we're going to vote the amendment first to remove the New York Times reference?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, seeing none. All in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, now we'll vote on the original, or, I need a motion on the original. So is that a motion, or motion from Watson? Do I have a second? I have a second from, as amended, but, yeah. Was that a second?
No, it's actually a request for an amendment, a second amendment, but you need a second first.
Do I have a second?
First motion?
Did we have an original motion?
Yeah, I really messed up.
I don't, we did not have an original motion.
So now, I can move to?
Wasn't Sarah's original motion, though, to move to approve the item with the exception of the New York Times wording?
No, well, that's what this is. That's what this motion is.
Okay.
I was asking for such a motion to come forward, and it has.
Okay.
All right. And we had a second from McLeheny, I do believe.
Okay.
Okay, well, watch it when you put your hand up.
Right.
All right, so further discussion on that.
I have a request for a second amendment, then. So I think part of the stumbling block that they went through at Marathon County with this was in the wording. And so I would request that we substitute the word equity for the word equality. And I think that will find what equates to be in the community bipartisan support. I think they were heading that direction at Marathon County, and they couldn't quite get there.
Yeah, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, you know, they're essentially the same thing. Some people take the word and give it different meanings to suit their argument. But that's fine with me if anybody would like to support the second amendment.
Is that the one, just to clarify? I'm seeing one instance of it on the?
On the top?
Correct. So equity to equality.
Fine. I mean.
There's two instances in? See, that's what I was asking about, if we've had legal review on this. So where is the second instance? Is it, it's further up, I think.
All right. Mr. Harris, just a sec. First of all, there's a motion, a second amendment to remove all instances of the word equity and replace it with equality.
And replace them with equality, because I think that will get over the hump that they were trying to get at out in the community.
If that's going to make people happy, then that's fine. Do I have a second to that? I'm looking for a second to that. Watson, you can, you can second, too, because it's on your motion, but you're now able to second an amendment. I'm not getting a second to that. Good. Okay, thank you. There is a second. All right, further discussion. Before we get into discussion, Mr. Harris, you have your hand up. You want to come in and give us some additional?
Yes, because I think, because I've been working on amendment, amended version that just passed the diversity affairs, and we dealt with the equity issue. So if you just define the word equity, we define it and amend it as just, just unfair, and impartial treatment, which is the dictionary definition, then it's however you defined it as a council, just like how we're going to move forward. And that seemed to deal with the issue, at least when we had our diversity affairs committee meeting, and there were people there that were, that had traditionally been in opposition, seemed to be fine with that. I also want to mention the word equity, just from a historical standpoint, was developed in the 14th century. And the word, you know, some people have said socialism or something, that came about in 19th century. So one has nothing to do with the other, just from a historical standpoint. But from that standpoint, in terms of making sense of the resolution, not having other people define what it is, if the committee defines it, that's what it is in terms of whatever the committee defines, if that helps.
Thank you. I think, as thinking folks, we can all make the giant leap to accept that acceptable meaning of the word equity is also applicable to the word equality in practice. So, okay, Alder Killian.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'd like to address that term, some of the history and what I said earlier. And I would not say monolithically, the right is opposed to this. In fact, I would not drag the right name through the mud like that, because being a fiscal conservative or believing that government overreach should be, should be opposed or mitigated, that does not equate to not recognizing equality, and I will say equity. And the grand irony here, and I'll be going into depth with this in another resolution in the future, is that under George Bush Senior, he started the Office of, let's hear it, Environmental Equity, okay? And I assure you, the man was not a socialist. That later became the Office of Environmental Justice. And even in recent federal executive orders, it is defined as, as you suggested, fair and impartial treatment to all, nothing controversial at all. And, you know, this, as we talk about a community for all, we're talking about things like equal access to assets and equal protections from hazards. And that's a very libertarian concept, okay? So when you look at the libertarian doctrine or platform online, what you will see is things like protection of property, protection of life. So it's just a matter of how these things are sliced and diced. And I assure you that opposing equality is not a legitimate conservative ideal. Thank you.
Okay. Alder Erasmusson?
Thank you. No one said that the one side or the other was opposing the concept of equality. But there is an awful lot of emphasis that has been put in recent months on the use of the term equity. And so the idea is, if we're going to find the middle and find something that everyone can agree on, just like Supervisor Harris said, you either have to define equity using its, you know, Webster definition, or you have to clarify that your intent in the use of the term is that people be treated fairly and equally. And that then dispels this notion that's out there, whether we like it or not, about, you know, the economics of the term equity. And, you know, there are a lot of people out there that perhaps without basis are fearful of that whole concept. Not to say I agree with it, but it's there. And we all have it in our districts, whether we want to admit it or not. You can go out in your districts, and you can find a percentage of people who will disagree with you on every caveat of this thing. So to find the middle, that's all I'm saying, is that we have to define that equity in our context for our purposes means fair and equal treatment only.
Do you find that just changing out the word with equality will just, you know, take care of that? I don't know if.
It's either that or inserting the definition like Supervisor Harris said they had to do at the county level. I mean, in some way, you have to clear that misconception with people.
That's fine, too. Yeah, I don't know that anybody needs to go down in flames, you know, defending the sanctity of the word equity. If we can use it, that's fine. If we can define it, that's fine. You know, but if somebody wants to use it as some kind of ideological hammer, they're going to do it no matter what you say. But that's fine, too, because, you know, they're wrong.
Well, they are, but to set an example for good governance, at the end of the day, at the heart of good governance is compromise, which at all of the levels of government above us, people have seemed to forgotten. So at the end of the day, if you can change a couple words and find consensus for more people than just one side, you've won that debate.
Well, we have a motion with two amendments suggested. We all understand what the amendments are. If we stick right now with simply swapping out equity with equality, is that good enough? Something that we can vote on as a committee? If that doesn't work, then we have to go, you know, back a step to, you know, the previous one amendment. So any further discussion? McLeheny?
I guess I would like to almost define equity. I think, I think that it would help, I understand the position of that it's equality, you know, that's what people want. But I think if, you know, I like to take the bugaboo away from the word. And so maybe if we define it and not change it, that would be a step forward. I don't know. I mean, what is the rest of the committee thinking?
Well, I'm amenable to that.
I'm completely open to that.
I'll withdraw my amendment if we can insert her definition.
Okay.
That might speed things up.
All right, and that, obviously, that's okay with you. That's for a second, so. Okay, Mr. Harris, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I wanted to say, because the reason we didn't end up, or the reason I haven't ended up getting rid of equity is because there is a difference between equality and equity. So, I mean, I've given a few examples, like equality would be like if you gave everybody, everybody didn't have shoes, you gave everybody shoes. Not all of them are the same size. The reason why the American Medical Association uses equity is because you can't give everybody the same medication, right? Every patient is different. Different communities have different challenges. And if you just say equality, that gives everybody the same, but that doesn't meet everybody's challenges. Now, it's not about taking away from one person the other, but I think there is a difference between equity. And when we're talking about fair, fair is not always equal, sometimes, if you start from behind. So fair, impartial, and equal treatment is the definition. So that's why you, the definition, rather than switching out equity in every single place, because equity is important in that aspect. So I hope that clarifies. I'm sorry for interrupting. Thank you.
That's not an interruption. It's participation, and you're welcome to do so. Okay, so we're talking about keeping equity and including a good definition of our intent using that term, correct? Okay. Further discussion? All in favor of the motion as amended twice, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And none are. Excellent. Well, great discussion. I appreciate everybody's patience and fortitude, you know, to step forward on this issue. And I hope that we all, when we go to council with this, stand up as a committee and push that we unanimously pass this, and we think it's important. And I hope to hear from everybody at council, because who knows what might transpire that night. And we have to go in there, you know, prepared to show a unified stand, because otherwise, anything short of that is just the kind of thing that the people who don't like this idea would love.
Well, and I think it's important, when we transcribe the minutes from this meeting, that we're detailed and accurate in our debate.
Sure.
So that we can explain to our peers who weren't here, who may not take the time to watch our video, how we came to the compromise that got us all to agree. That's what every level of government should be doing, and many fail on. So, you know, we came up with a product we could all agree on. That shouldn't be a problem when it goes to council. But I think with accurate minutes, that's going to help.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, next item, staffing updates. Mr. Lance, what do you got for us? Mr. Lance, what do you got for us?
Well, not too much, I guess. As you know, Sean has left us, unfortunately, and in the meantime, I'll be here until we have a new director starting, hopefully soon. And we did hire an assistant city planner recently. He's in our office. If you remember Brad Sipple, he had left for Madison, and we have Sam Wessel from River Falls, started last week, and be helping us out on all things planning, community, and economic development. So I'll make sure he attends and says hi to everyone wanting these meetings. I think that's about all I have.
Short, but sweet. Thank you. Well, thanks again, everybody. I appreciate it. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. I have one from Watson, and I have a second from Killian. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.